Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the June 4th meeting of the Los Gatos Town Council. Can I get a roll call, please?
Thank you and good evening. Councilmember Sayoc.
Here.
Councilmember Specter.
Here.
Councilmember Rennie.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jensen.
Here.
Mayor and Chair Leonardis.
Here. Leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening is Mr. Ted Chin. Can you please come forward? I will say a few words about Ted. So, I'm just gonna ask a couple of questions.
Okay.
You came to Los Gatos at an advanced age a few years ago. You're a senior in our community. You're new to our community. Why did you choose Los Gatos?
I have two boys. They moved from Connecticut and they live in the neighborhood. And that's why I'm here.
Okay, so you're two boys?
Yeah.
Okay. Next question, what do you love most about Los Gatos?
I came here because I love the people. I love the wealth. I love the town council.
This is not a setup.
The farmer's market. I love the kids here. That's the future of this town, right there.
So we're... And you have your kids as well, and they like to surf. Also about Ted, he likes to travel and he is involved in some community service, but he's... I wanted to bring Ted in as an example of somebody who came to Los Gatos as a senior and they chose our community to retire in, I suppose. Which is, you know, most of the times it goes the other way. So, welcome Ted and thank you for leading us in the pledge this evening. Here is...
Is everyone joining the pledge?
Whenever you're ready.
Okay, stand up. Everyone, I want to hear it loud. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. How about a round of applause for Ted? Another round of applause for Mr. Ted Chin. Thank you for coming in. As Mr. Chin mentioned, we have many outstanding youth in our community, which are the future of this community. And this evening, we're saying goodbye to some of them as youth commissioners, but it's not forever. They'll be back. They will be living at home someday again in Los Gatos, or raising their family, and such and such. No, we want to congratulate the youth, because this is... The Youth Commission does so much work on behalf of the youth for our community. They do a wonderful job, and I'd like to invite the Chief of Police up to join me. We'll be presenting some certificates to those who are in attendance this evening. Hello, Chief. So, our first youth that we bring forward for photo, Zishon Chunawala. I've seen this on a show before. Okay. This is for you.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Zishon. Let's get a picture. Why don't we get you in the middle? Thank you, Zishon. Next up is Anna Sismaro. Congratulations. Let's get you, get a photo. Miranda Hunter. Congratulations. Alex Marcellin. Alec Marcellin. He's not here.
Tad Mendez.
Tad Mendez. You got your email today. Thank you. Congratulations. Justin Kwan. It's different for everyone. Congratulations, Justin. Saye Ragani. Let's open that up. I like your shirt. Kaylin Zabecki. Thank you. Okay, so, it's a couple that did not make it this evening. I just want to give them a call out. They're also departing Sasha Ballingsam, Jacob Isaacs, Nick Rosnick, and Alec Marcellin. He didn't make it. Those didn't make it this evening, but they're also leaving the Youth Commission. We congratulate all them as well. So if y'all want to come up and get a group photo, we'll do it all together. By the way, I want to also mention, it's finals week, so right when we're done, you're welcome to go home and do homework. Or you can stay with us till midnight. It's up to you. We'll let you decide. Nobody wants to get on this end? Alec, there you are. He just... Okay, Alec, you just arrived. Chief, real quick, let's get a picture with Alec somewhere. With all the others in the background. Here, 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 real quick. He must have been surfing. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Alright. But don't leave yet, because we have to honor the business of the year that the Youth Commission chose. We'd like to invite up the Los Gatos Coffee Roasting Company, Ms. Terri Hope. Terri, your business has been chosen by the Youth Commission as being the youth-friendly business of the year. This is a great honor. Congratulations, you have a heart of gold. Thank you. Now that your hands are full, would you like to say?
Sure. Well, I want to say thank you to everybody, but mostly, you know, while I have youth working for me and been able to host the Under 21 Club, and recently, we've got lots of teens coming in for open-mic nights. That's been so much fun. And recently, we had eighth graders from Fisher Middle School come in and do a poetry night. And I thought, oh, we could probably get two or three kids. No, we had sixty. Sixty kids, and they were just so wonderful. So, I get so much back in return. So, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity.
Thank you, Terri. Do you want a photo with the group? Do the Youth Commissioners want to come up one more time, get a group photo with Ms. Hope? Chief, do you want to come back? One more big round of applause. Thank you, everybody. Alright, moving on with our consent calendar. Does any member of council wish to pull an item from our consent calendar? Councilmember Specter.
I'm not going to pull anything, but I will be excluding from my yes vote, Project 8130327, from the agenda, item three.
Okay, so you're, I guess, abstaining on three? Consent item three?
No, I'm going to support the item, except for that one line item.
Thank you. Anybody from the public wish to pull an item from our consent calendar this evening? Seeing none, can we get a motion? Vice Mayor?
We have to approve the consent calendar. Absent number six, we got a desk item. I believe we are being asked to pull that. And with the exception of Ms. Specter's notation, move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor. I opposed. None. Passed unanimously. We will hear item six at the end of... Oh, we're not pulling item six. Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. So, moving on to our verbal communications. I have several cards this evening for verbal communications. These are for items which are not on our regular agenda. So, if anybody wishes to speak on anything, please fill out a card now. Our first speaker is Kathleen Wiley.
Good evening. My name is Kathleen Wiley, and I've lived in Los Gatos with my husband and two young boys for eight years. I love this town. It's a great place to raise a family, because people are very involved with their children, encouraging them in sports, and leading them towards good colleges. My biggest concern, however, is what is our planet going to be like when my boys are heading to college? We currently have an administration that does not care about our environment, so it is up to us to make individual changes in our daily lives. One of the state mandatory elements for the Town General Plan is environmental justice. Therefore, as you are updating the general plan for the next twenty years, one subject I would encourage the town to address is food. The process of raising animals for food, also called animal agriculture, is the most single environmentally destructive human enterprise on the planet. Factory farms are responsible for 1.4 trillion pounds of animal waste in America. That is 130 times as much as a human, and there are no laws to regulate its treatment or disposal. Animal agriculture creates more greenhouse gases worldwide than the entire transportation sector. More than all cars, planes, trains, and ships combined. It is also a leading cause of deforestation, wild species extinction, fisheries depletion, air and water pollution, ocean dead zones, pesticide overuse, and frightening antibiotic-resistant diseases, because eighty percent of the antibiotics sold in the U.S. are fed to livestock. Animal agriculture currently uses about eighty-three percent of global farmland, but provides only eighteen percent of calories. In a 2018 Oxford University study, being called the most comprehensive analysis to date of the agriculture's environmental impacts, the researchers concluded that if meat and dairy production were replaced with plant-based farming, global farmland use could be reduced by more than seventy-five percent and still feed the world. According to the World Resource Institute, when one person replaces a meat burger with a veggie burger just once a week for a year, the reduction in greenhouse gases is equivalent of driving 324 fewer miles. That is why I would like to introduce you to a program called Green Monday. I am here with a group of Green Monday supporters now. I'd like to ask them to stand. So, that's one meal. It's equivalent of driving... Thank you. So, Lisa will continue.
Thank you, Ms. Wiley. We'll see if we have any questions for Councilmember Sayoc.
The Speaker was about to give us a statistic. If you could just finish that statistic?
Okay. I was running out of time. So, if the town of Los Gatos replaced a meat burger with a veggie burger just once a week, says thirty-four thousand people, which is the approximate population of Los Gatos, it's equivalent of driving ten million eight hundred and eighty thousand fewer miles, or taking four hundred and three cars off a road. So, that's one meal a week. That's why we'd like to introduce Green Monday, which my friend Lisa will talk about. And we have a lot of literature here for you.
Councilmember Rennie has a question for you.
Yeah, Ms. Wiley, could you repeat your ask again? What is it you'd like us to do for you?
To introduce a program called Green Monday, which I didn't have time to talk about. But it's a program that was introduced by Amy, who happens to be here. They have started this program in Berkeley, in the town of Berkeley, and also at companies like Adobe. And different companies in the Bay Area are starting to introduce this program, where the council members would lead by example. And on Mondays, they would have plant-based meals. Restaurants would start promoting Green Mondays and providing plant-based meals. And we would, Green Mondays would provide free education for the public, just to raise awareness on the environmental destruction of animal agriculture. And there would be free presentations and downloads and...
And you had, I think you started off, if I could follow up, you started off mentioning the general plan update, but you really want us to do, start something before then, correct?
That would be wonderful, because if we want to do something about the, about climate change, it's not effective unless you are effectively making a point to reduce your consumption of meat and dairy. So, it'd be great to have that somehow written in the general plan.
Awesome. Okay, thank you.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Wiley. Next speaker, Spiro Coolores. Did I say it right? Alright.
Hi, Spiro Coolores. I live at 34 Walnut Avenue. Have been in Los Gatos since 1992. And when we bought and started building, remodeling in Los Gatos, our house was a pre-1941 structure, so it came under historic designation. At the time that we did the remodel, we learned a lot about the historic process in Los Gatos. And in going through the building process, we calculate that we spent probably an extra year and thirty to forty percent on our project due to the historic regulations. Recently, I've become aware of the Mills Act, which was an act passed in 1972 that provides property tax relief for the preservation and renovation of historic properties. And although we won't be able to take advantage of it, we think that it would be something very beneficial to others with historic properties in town and would welcome the town council supporting a study of the Mills Act and consider adopting it as Palo Alto, Saratoga, and many other communities around the peninsula already have. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Lisa Wade.
I'm Lisa Wade, and I've lived in Los Gatos for fifteen years, I think. I've raised my two sons here and love living in Los Gatos. I'm just going to explain a little more what Green Monday actually is. So, there are two objectives. One is to reduce our meat and dairy consumption in order to substantially shrink our carbon footprint. And the second part is to bring public awareness to the devastating impact of meat and dairy production on climate change and the environment. And so, here's what a citywide Green Monday plan might look like. It would have two parts. Sustainable menus would be one part, and community education would be the second part. So, for sustainable menus, it would be things like, the city council would be leading by example by only procuring plant-based meals for meetings and events. That sends a really good message. The second one is that city-owned and city-managed facilities and programs would feature healthy, plant-based options on menus and identify them as Green Monday specials. And then also, restaurants would be encouraged to add plant-based Green Monday specials to their menus and to display Green Monday badges. And the community education part would be things like, Green Monday volunteers and interns would table at farmer's markets and fairs and other community events. The city would schedule educational programs on the environmental impacts of our food choices, such as, Green Monday provides speakers and also videos that are free of charge. And also, libraries and community centers would display Green Monday posters and book lists, which are all downloadable on the Green Monday website. Green Mondays would really help Los Gatos stay vibrant. There is a growing plant-based community, especially among young people, but in all ages. People are looking for places where they can go to eat, and fast food places are even providing plant-based meat options. And currently, there are a lot of people, including my family and extended family, who are leaving Los Gatos to go and eat. What we really would love to see is Los Gatos be a magnet for, to draw new people in, as well as keep the plant-based community in Los Gatos. Also, in closing, introducing Green Monday to Los Gatos would be the most impactful thing we could do to limit climate change. And any plan to address climate change would be inadequate if it doesn't specifically commit to reducing the amount of meat and dairy we consume. And we have here Amy Halpern-Laff from Green Monday, who has helped put Green Monday on the agenda in Berkeley and in companies like Adobe. And so, she could be a great resource.
Thank you, Ms. Wade. We have a question for you. Councilmember Sayoc?
Thank you. Without knowing whether Amy will be speaking, you mentioned that this is something that Berkeley has implemented. Is it something that Berkeley has officially implemented, or residents such as yourselves have banded together and started talking to restaurateurs about putting more sustainable and plant-based menus?
So, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it says Berkeley has adopted this as a city.
And unfortunately, this won't be captured on TV, so if you could just repeat what she said, and then, and if there's an opportunity for her to come up?
So, a Green Monday resolution was adopted unanimously by the Berkeley City Council.
Okay. And then, my second question to you is whether you've approached any of our local restaurants in changing their menus and adding more plant-based items?
We haven't, but I think that's a great idea. We've talked about it, and we, it's something we'd love to do in Los Gatos. I'm sure you've done it elsewhere, Amy. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Jeff Siegel.
Good evening. Good to be back here in front of you guys again. Great segue, because of course, we know Berkeley has also adopted the Mills Act and done a tremendous job of preserving their historical heritage and leveraging the state mandated funds set aside for that purpose. And of course, that's something I would love to see Los Gatos do as well. So, here's an interesting, I want to share with you a perspective, a little bit different conversation than we've had last time. So, when I look at the different towns throughout the state, I've lived in different parts of the state over the years. Clearly, you know, San Francisco, Sacramento, LA, San Diego, San Jose, I mean, these are all towns much bigger than us and obviously have even larger, you know, historic, you know, areas to preserve. But beyond that, you know, you have Berkeley, Palo Alto, but beyond that, I would think, when I look at the data, that Los Gatos could possibly be in the top ten of towns in this state that have that rich of a historical heritage. That said, in contrast to that, we're not even in the top ninety. We're probably not even in the top one hundred towns in the state that has committed to taking advantage of the resources available to it to preserve, to preserve that historic, you know, heritage. So, there's a tremendous gap between what we have to work with and to preserve versus where we are today in terms of what we're actually doing. And I'd love to see us to narrow that gap. And I personally, I think it puts our town at a competitive disadvantage against other towns, where they can have such pride and joy in their crown jewels when you look at that part of their cities. So, why haven't we done it before? You know, I don't know, it's been around since 1972, so I don't know what's happened, you know, in the last forty years. But maybe it's because no one has just stepped up to the plate, you know, as a resident and asked for it. So, you know, I'm here to evangelize, you know, a... So, you know, I'm here to evangelize, you know, us doing, of course, exactly that. We did raise this issue three months ago, trying, in terms of trying to educate the town council about this, and we did the same thing with the Historic Preservation Committee now as well, which was terrific. It was well-received. But the reason why no action is taken in the last three months, I'm told by members of town staff, is that it's just simply not a priority. Because the priorities were set at the beginning of the year, and this came after that, right? So a fair point that they have. In the corporate world, where I come out of, how do things become priorities? If you have something that is relatively low-risk, low-cost, and very high-value, that's a pretty strategic framework for something becoming a priority. So I think we meet that very well with this act, and I would love to see us at the town council to make this a priority by adding this to the town agenda, which it hasn't been up to now.
Mr. Siegel, our time is up, but maybe we have questions from council vice mayor.
Mr. Siegel, thank you. I've enjoyed your presentation over the presentations over the past few meetings. In January, the Mills Act actually was before the council to determine whether it wanted to adopt it as a priority. It did not. In, when you've done your presentations, you have frequently referred to what you call state mandated funds set aside for this. My understanding that the Mills Act, basically what it does is provide a property tax break to people who own historic houses that goes to the property owner directly. There is no fund for the town. Am I mistaken about that?
You're correct. It's funds that would otherwise leave the town through property taxes, but would then remain in the town for the express purpose of that. So you're correct.
So remain in town with the, with the individual property owner?
Yes, specifically for the allocation to be used for preservation, but that's correct.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Siegel. Next speaker, Mark Trout. That's the last card I have for verbal. If anybody else wants, please fill one out.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, City Council, and I have one in this room. I, you know, I missed the salute to the flag, and it's a wonderful salute, you know, where we acknowledge that we are one nation under God. And, you know, I attended the supervisors' meeting this morning in San Jose, and they had a, the bishop come in and do the invocation, you know, because it does bring up the subject of God when we acknowledge as the American people that we are one nation under God. And he, he ended his prayer like Oglethorpe did the day after 9/11. We pray in your name, amen. And I asked him, what name is that? Is that the name of Jesus? I mean, we've, you know, what, you know, people have different concepts of what God is, right? But I'd like to talk about 9/11, you know? I don't know if who remembers Senate Majority Leader Tom Daschle, and the speech that he gave was quite prophetic. You can look it up. I'm not lying. It's just amazing, in spite of the fact that we have, for the most part, as a nation forsaken God. God had this guy kind of speak. He didn't realize what he was saying, but he got up and basically said, and it's hard to find inspiration for yesterday, but I find a passage in Isaiah speaks to us all. And then he quoted Isaiah 9 verse 10, which says, "The bricks are fallen down, but we will build with hue and stones. The sycamores are cut down, but we will change them into cedars." I don't know if you remember that statement, which obviously it did seem to apply, right, to rebuilding the World Trade Center bigger and better than ever. The bricks are fallen down, we'll build with hue and stones, we'll make it bigger and better than ever. The only problem is, is the context of the statement. If he had actually read the context of the statement, he actually never would have read that verse, but he did, and he had to. And it was kind of like Caiphas, the high priest. He had no idea what he was really saying when he got up and said, "You know nothing at all, nor consider that it is expedient for us that one man should die for the people and that the whole nation perish not." But this spake not of himself, but being high priest that year, he prophesied that, you know, Christ would die for our sins. And Tom gets up there and, "Well, the context is this. For unto us a child is born, unto us a son is given, and the government should be upon his shoulder, and his name should be called Wonderful Counselor, the mighty God, the everlasting Father, the Prince of Peace, of the increase of his government and peace. There should be no end upon the throne of David and upon his kingdom, to order it and to establish it with judgment and with justice, from henceforth even forever. The zeal of the Lord of Hosts will perform this." And then we come into what Tom said, basically.
Mr. Trout, if you could just finish up your last sentence there.
Okay, thank you. It says that it was spoken out of pride and hardness of heart.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in. Now, I have David McGregor. Now, you turned in two cards for the same thing. One is for Agenda Item 10, and it says Chamber of Commerce. One is for Verbal Communications, it says Chamber of Commerce. So would you like to speak on Item 10 for the Chamber of Commerce, or would you like to speak about the Chamber of Commerce for a different reason?
I would like to speak in support of the Agenda Item, just because I own a small business, I had to shut it to come here to...
Are you, are you planning on leaving? I'm sorry. Are, would you like to speak on Item 10 when it comes up on the agenda, or would you like to speak?
I'd like to speak in support of the Chamber of Commerce in general.
Okay.
That's...
Okay. Please proceed, I'm sorry.
Okay, so my name's David McGregor. My wife and I own Redemption, which is opened in, on North Santa Cruz last year. We're just basically one-year-old now. We also have one in downtown Campbell. Basically, we have seen, since we've been here, I actually joined the Chamber of Commerce as a board member within the past few months. And having seen the work that they do and that Catherine does, and all of the just tireless effort she puts in to try and make the town more invigorated for us and to try and help the, the business down there, I would just like to say that we stand behind the work she does and what she is asking for, we support, because we believe that it's not just frivolous anything. She's, whatever she does seems to really help, she, support businesses in the town. We, obviously you guys knows a lot of change happening downtown at the moment, a lot of empty storefronts, so seeing what they're doing and how hard they're fighting to try and bring more business here, bring more people here, for us is really exciting, and we would just like to throw our support, my support personally, behind what she's doing and what she's trying to do for the town.
Thank you.
No worries.
All right, that concludes our verbal. We have a question for you, Mr. McGregor.
Actually, it's not for him. I'd like to make a request based on verbal communication. I'd like to request that, a future Agenda item for the Green Monday resolution and invite other council members to support my request.
It looks like we have councilmember Seok's hand up. Would you like to comment?
I'll second the request. And also, if we could just have our town manager remind us the general plan update timeline. I know that this, the general plan and the principles and the action items within them are eventually coming to council and that there's community meetings, but if you could just share when those are and where we are in that process.
So we've just concluded the vision and guiding principles discussion. That will now move to Planning Commission in July and to council in August, so you'll have an opportunity as council to weigh in. In addition, the General Plan Update Advisory Committee is continuing its work, and the public is welcome to join us. Our next meeting is June 20th, 7:00 PM in these chambers, and we're going to be discussing, starting the discussion regarding land use alternatives. Ultimately, we will have a draft plan, draft policies, and an EIR for your consideration next summer, in the summer of 2020.
And within the general plan, are there specifics? For example, if we talk about one of our sustainability principles, do we actually start to identify items to address that, or is that in a separate document?
So the town currently has a sustainability plan, and through the work of this council, you directed us to incorporate updating the sustainability plan as part of the larger general plan update. So that is in the work plan. Sustainability has been a theme for Los Gatos for many, many years, and now state law requires us also to address climate change as well as other hazards associated with climate change, so this issue will come up through the planning process.
Okay. And the specifics within that issue as well?
Yes, and it will be up to our committee in terms of whether or not this particular issue is addressed and how it's addressed, but the larger climate change and our goals to reduce greenhouse gases is part of our requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Spector.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Following up on that, if the request that was made this evening were to make its way through the general plan and be addressed in that document, that would be something that wouldn't occur until maybe the second half of 2020. If the community and the council wanted to address it sooner than that, it would have to take some other form. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Just following up on the general plan as we do this discussion later, Ms. Ready, correct me if I'm wrong or acknowledge if I'm correct. The environmental justice that is referred to by Ms. Willie, the portion of the general plan, that actually refers to disadvantaged communities who have suffered from pollution or some other factors because they are politically or not, don't have a voice, or they're poor, and so they disproportionately suffered from some kind of environmental factor. This that they're talking about would not fall under that. It would fall under a climate change or a sustainability, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
All right. This concludes verbal communications. We'll move on to our first public hearing of the evening. Item number eight is the introduction of an ordinance of the town of Los Gatos amending Chapter 15 of the Los Gatos Town Code entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic. So Ms. Lampros will be delivering our staff report on this.
Good evening, Mayor Leonardis, councilmembers Spector, Jensen, Seok, and Rennie. I am Deputy Town Attorney Lynn Lampros, introducing ordinance amending Chapter 15 of the Town Code. We ask you approve this ordinance by title only, and this is amending the Motor Vehicles and Traffic chapter. Periodically, the town staff reviews chapters of our Town Code for accuracy with current law and town practices. Chapter 15 was identified as having areas that needed revision to reflect more accurately the duties and how they are undertaken. For example, when the code was written in 1968, it assigned some duties to Chief of Police that are by practice and appropriately more with the Town Engineer, Town Traffic Engineer, placement of signs, approval of types of signs used. Furthermore, the code is being amended to reflect updates in law, specifically constitutional law, principles that have changed over the years regarding, for example, sleeping in cars. Our Town Code was not in keeping with current law, state law on that subject, so we're making changes that reflect constitutional law adjustments. And finally, the ordinance is being amended to give the town staff more tools to address some nuisance issues, such as nuisance vehicles. There is no direct fiscal impact with this ordinance. It complies with SEQA. It's consistent with the general plan. This concludes the report, and of course, I'm here for your questions.
Thank you. We have questions from council. Vice Mayor.
Thank you for this, Ms. Lampros. I was just curious, there are a variety of definitions that are at the beginning of the code, and one thing that is not defined is vehicle. And given that there are so many now new and different mobility options that we were probably going, are probably going to see, it seems to me that it'd be appropriate to have some definition that indicates that those things would be included.
I, I understand that. Our vehicle code, our, this chapter did have very few definitions, and I was trying to not rock the boat and, and add many. We can defer to the vehicle code, the state vehicle code, for definitions that aren't contained in our chapter.
And do you know, does that include electric bikes, electric skaters, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera?
The, the vehicle code does define those things out.
All right. Thank you.
No more questions or discussion. We will open up the public hearing on this. I have no cards. If anybody wishes to speak, now is your chance. Seeing nobody coming forward, we will close the public hearing. We'll go to council for a discussion and our motion. Vice Mayor.
Okay, well, also, I will move that we adopt the proposed ordinance by title only, which is Attachment 4.
Yes, thank you.
Second. We have a motion and a second discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. Passes unanimously. We must read the title of the ordinance.
An ordinance of, an ordinance of the Town Council of the town of Los Gatos, amending Chapter 15 of the Los Gatos Town Code entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic.
Thank you. Moving on to item number nine, which is a Town Code Amendment for Application A-19-003, town-wide. It is considered an amendment to Chapter 29 zoning regarding the Town Code Demolition Regulations. Mr. Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers. Before you this evening are potential modifications to the town's demolition regulations. The modifications have been reviewed by the Policy Committee, the Historic Preservation Committee, and most recently, the Planning Commission, who forwarded a recommendation for approval with some slight modifications. The intent of the revisions is to streamline land use process, which is, this particular land use process, which is a strategic priority of the council. It will allow for the removal of the current contiguity requirement, which many property owners and architects find difficult to comply with, and it lengthens the process and also increases the costs for going through that process. And so the contiguity is the first change, and that would be changed to both historic and nonhistoric homes. And the second change would be to allow for repair, which is currently only allowed for historic homes, for nonhistoric homes, so that if they're, get into construction and find irreparable repair, they don't have to stop the process, go through the architecture and site process for a new house, and then start back up and go through the building process. So this will help, again, streamline that process and give folks more opportunities to do projects at a building permit level. There is a desk item that we sent out today. There was an error where exterior was used twice in a row, which should have been exterior and/or interior, so that is in Attachment 6. And should you decide to introduce the ordinance this evening, we would please ask that you reference that. With that, that concludes my report, and we are here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson. Questions for staff? Seeing none, we have a public hearing. I have no cards on this item. If anybody wishes to speak, please submit a card. The public hearing is now closed. We'll go back to council for a motion or discussion. Vice Mayor.
Okay, I'm on a roll here. So I will move that we introduce an ordinance, which is Attachment 4, by title only, which affects amendments to Chapter 29 regarding demolition.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Town manager.
I just want a clarification. The motion is referencing Attachment 6, which is the updated...
I'm sorry. I'm just looking at page one of the old staff report.
Thank you.
Sorry, yes, you're correct. Thank you.
And the second, or that correction?
Yes, I agree.
Okay. Councilmember Seok? No? Okay, thank you. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. It passes unanimously. Will you read the title of the ordinance, please?
An ordinance of the Town Council of the town of Los Gatos, amending Chapter 29 zoning regulations of the Town Code regarding demolition regulations.
Thank you. Councilmember Seok.
In addition, during the, it's highlighted in the staff report, and it was discussed at the Planning Commission, that there were larger demolition definition concepts that they'd like the Policy Committee to look through. And so if I could, I'd like to make a motion that that be referred to the Policy Committee for discussion.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. It passes unanimously. Thank you, councilmember Seok, for that. Moving on to item number 10. Authorize the town manager to execute an annual agreement for services with the Los Gatos Chamber of Commerce to manage the town's information center and assist with the coordination of the leadership of Los Gatos program. Ms. Ren, do you have a report for us?
I do. Good evening, Mayor and Council, Monica Ren, Economic Vitality Manager. Before you this evening is our annual agreement for services with the Chamber of Commerce. The town has been contracting with the Chamber since 2001 for our visitors' information center and leadership of Los Gatos. We truly value the services that the Chamber provides, and we look forward to continuing to provide those. This agreement for services has stayed relatively unchanged until last year, when some changes were requested by the Chamber, which included an increase for visitor center, for the, the cost of the visitor center services, and a reduction in many of the leadership of Los Gatos duties and coordination fee there. The town also provided a $5,000 subsidy... The town also provided a $5,000 subsidy in that contract for community vitality. Leading up to the 2019-20 budget hearing, there was some differing information provided by the Chamber as to what services they were looking to provide for the upcoming year. And so in anticipation, the, the staff earmarked $45,000, which was a status quo budget heading into this year. Prior to posting this agenda, there were some, a request made by the Chamber, which the council received in an email, and it's also part of your staff report, attachment two, which provides some requests for the next fiscal year. Given that there was already the $45,000 earmark, staff tried to work within that, that budget to meet some of the requests of the Chamber. So you see before you the increase in the Leadership Los Gatos coordination fee of $4,000. And then the $1,000, we think, will be adequate to cover the fees that are beyond the tuition. Through your discussion this evening, of course, council may decide to consider additional requests that are in attachment two and can direct, and can direct staff to consider moving some funds. And we're here for further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ren. Councilmember Specter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Ren, if you could just verbalize for me, and just for generally for the public, what is your understanding of the amount that is currently being requested by the Chamber? And for what components?
Sure. I understand that the Chamber is currently requesting $55,000 for the Visitors Information Center, and then $5,000 for coordinating the Leadership Los Gatos program, and then $2,000 to cover additional expenses beyond the tuition.
So we have, if I'm following you quick, quickly, $62,000?
That's correct.
All right. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, I have one card so far on this item. We'll open up the public hearing. The first card I have is David McGregor. So that's, trying to sort that out last time. Okay. Catherine Summers.
Can everybody see that? A little bit? Good evening, council. Catherine Summers with the Los Gatos Chamber of Commerce. Thanks for having me here. As you can see, I did pull the agreement from the consent calendar for various reasons. The number one is that I hope that you will consider giving us a little more money this year to appropriately fund our town's Visitor Information Center. For starters, I do want to say that I'm, I really am not asking for a handout. We've gone through a really deliberate series of looking at what the Visitor Information Center does, what the expectations are of us, and how we need to provide these services adequately and appropriately, and the funds that we need to do that. I'll get to that in a minute. As you heard, there's $45,000 set aside for the Chamber to conduct two things this year. One is run the information, Visitor Information Center, and the other is to do the, help with the facilitating of Leadership Los Gatos. The facilitation of Leadership Los Gatos aside, that $5,000 is fine. Certainly, we can discuss that later, but I'm okay with that $5,000 to cover that for those services. But I really would like you to consider the raising the $40,000 to $55,000. And that extra $15,000 is, I hope, well-stated in the document that I just gave you. Of all the exhibits that I gave you over the past week, those were the scope of services that the town expects us to do, and then they were the services that we actually provide. And the document in front of you tonight shows the scope. And then in green, you'll see that that's the cost associated with the, the services that we provide under that expectation. And then in red, at the bottom of the document, is all of the additional services that we have, that we provide. On this screen up here, I've outlined, so this is really the summary, of what each of the items on that scope cost. And as you can see, if you go down the whole list, and we did this today with my accountant and.
That the microphone is in front of you.
Sorry, good point. So we went through this real, you know, looking, crunching the numbers today, and we came up with everything to equal $61,200. Again, that does not include the leadership, leave the leadership out of it. But this is what the town has really expected us to do, and our services have grown because the, the Visitor Information Center is becoming a more and more popular place in town, and a lot of people come in. And our services have grown. You know, we do a lot more on the internet and with Facebook and Instagram. As you will see, that social media marketing, that is not even included in the $61,000. I just wanted to point that out. That is really something totally different. But I'm hoping that you will consider at least increasing the amount that you give us to run the information center, Visitor and Information Center appropriately.
Thank you. Mr. Rennie.
Thank you, Ms. Summers. Could you summarize for me? If I look at this, you're asking for $15,000 more. What is the return on my investment? What more am I going to get? Am I going to get more sales tax revenue? Am I going to get happy visitor, more happy visitors? What am I, what's my return on investment for $15,000?
So I think both of those, both of those things are included in that. I think we really are seeing the spirit, the momentum, if you will, you know, grow in this town. I mean, I've never seen more people come into our Visitor Information Center. It may be because we have that illegal sandwich board out on the street, but people cut, you know, out on Main Street. But we probably have five to seven people, particularly in the summer, it even grows from there, coming into our offices, asking where to eat, where to stay, where to have their weddings. Can they have a packet of information to give to all the wedding guests that are coming? So in terms of sales tax revenue, one would hope that all those people do come to town. They stay here, they dine here, and they shop here. We also have, I mean, we've been laughing in my office lately because we probably field eight to 10 phone calls a day just answering random questions from everybody. And we answer it as happily and politely as we can. And I do think that really is a service that nobody else in town is providing. And so people call, and they like Los Gatos because they call and they get a, a reception, you know, or somebody on the other end that really helps them. And as again, I think I say in there, we are concierge, concierge of sorts in this town. And I think people really do appreciate it.
So if I could kind of push that question a little bit more. So for my $15,000, it sounds like you're already doing things, right? So for $15,000, are, is the phone going to be answered more often? What, what's, what's going to really be different?
So I think two things. I think we've undersold ourselves a little bit as to what we are actually doing. And again, in the last two years, our services have grown. I mean, we are, we, you know, we've done the town map. We have a new map that's coming out. We're doing those street poll banners. You know, we've taken a lot, we've taken initiative on a lot of projects that we really have just absorbed as the Chamber of Commerce and our staff time. And I mean, even Randy today said that, you know, she answers questions on Nextdoor about, you know, people have questions, and she'll answer it just as the Chamber of Commerce representative or the Information Resource Center or whatever it is. So we really are working at all angles in the town. And so what will you get more for your $15,000? I mean, certainly that will go towards destination development and destination marketing. And not all, you know, it won't all go there. I mean, some of it will. I mean, we had never really priced out what it, what it costs to have the only public restroom in town. And believe it or not, we have a lot of people that come in and use that. I mean, it, it sounds sort of silly to, you know, but when we really looked at it today, I mean, it's a, it's a resource in this town that a lot of people use, and we really should, there should be some reimbursement for that. So some of these are really simple things. I mean, the printing we went through, the dining guide. I mean, you know, a lot of, a lot of that is online now. And in fact, every time that somebody clicks onto the town website, they're directed to the Chamber website, which we update, you know, we maintain that on a weekly basis. I mean, our dining guide, even though it's on the website, it's also in print. You know, we have somebody who puts in the hours to update that probably quarterly, which is really great. And so I think we're more on top of the things than we've ever have been before. And I think it is making a difference, and people are seeing it, particularly online, on Facebook and Instagram. I think we, you know, no one really likes to hear what, how many followers you have, but, but really, we have more and more people who are looking at what the Chamber is doing, and they come to us for that community calendar and that central point for, to find out what's going on in town.
Okay. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Summers. I have a couple of questions if I might, Mr. Mayor. I'm wondering why we didn't get this information for our budget that we, meeting that we had last week?
So I, I guess I didn't really know how to position it, you know, as I go through, you know, different, different iterations of how to present my needs to council. I mean, certainly, one of the reasons that I presented it as the $15,000 one-time boost that I needed for this year to do marketing, destination development and destination marketing. I think the reason, I, well, I know the reason that I did that is that I'm hopeful that eventually, if this P-bid forms, they are the likely body that would take over some of, you know, some of those very specific things, the marketing and the destination development, what have you. At this juncture, though, we don't have that. And so then, as I started really looking into it and hearing that the staff was going to propose just the same amount that they've given us for the last, you know, eight, 10 years, I, and then I thought, you know, actually, we really could just, you know, the town's information center, Visitor Information Center, really should have more money to run effectively and efficiently. And so it really was more of a, you know, I kind of looked at the whole thing, even above and beyond what the P-bid could eventually do. They could enhance those services, but.
Okay. My second question is, if one were a very skeptical person, one would think about your one-time request for the media campaign that was not adopted by the council. Add up what you're asking for tonight and it's, and make the, reach the conclusion that you were asking for $15,000 for your media campaign that you didn't get last meeting. And what I've heard you say tonight is that your focus is going to be on media outreach, Facebook, Instagram, blah, blah, which is what we heard at our last meeting about your media campaign. So am I, are you really asking for the $15,000 for the media campaign?
I'm not, actually. The, my Chamber Board has given me the go-ahead that we will do that anyways. Now, I don't know if we can do that, we can fund it for the whole year, which is why we are funding it, and I've signed the contract for four months, regardless of what you all decide on help, you know, helping with that or not. My Food and Wine Committee has agreed that they will give me all the money that they collect themselves to go towards that four-month media campaign. As you can see on here, I have it completely separate. It's not in that $61,000, so it wasn't even taken into account. Sure, will some of the funding help with that? But I, but I don't have to earmark it, and I can, we can have that in the contract if you wish to not have that included. I think it all kind of, sort of like a general fund for the Visitor Information Center, that it's all going to help with destination marketing, destination development, and the running of the, of the center itself with staffing and rent and all of that. So, so sure, will some of it come over? But they really are two different things. It really was more that I analyzed how much does it run, how much does it cost to run a town information center?
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Specter.
Thank you. Following along the same lines, this most recent, these most recent numbers that you have up there, and I have them here. When you have, for example, rent $18,000, staff $26,000, have you broken a portion of your total staff and rent costs out to attribute to your town services? And if so, how did you, what were your numbers?
So I actually worked with Rob Schultz on that last year, because I gave a presentation like this last year, if you remember. And so he said to look at the square footage of the Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Information and break it down. And so we, we broke it down so that only a third of our actual space is considered rent for the Visitor Information Center. Our total bill is $55,000, so we kind of backed, we backed that out, which is how I came to the $18,000. Our conference room, as you know, is open to any and every nonprofit in Los Gatos that wants to use it, and I don't charge. And so that's a place for convening and, and for meeting of the merchants, the Food and Wine Group, which you don't have to be a Chamber member. The Veterans Association meets there. The only Toastmasters Group in Los Gatos meets there. So it's a, really is a community gathering place, if you will. In terms of the staff, that was an interesting one. What I did on that was I based it on $12.50, which is the going minimum wage, and I then did it 40 weeks a year, 40 hours a week, however many, 52 weeks in a year, you know, however, however much we're supposed to be open. And I did it at $1,250. Knowing that my staff, first of all, I don't have a person designated to answering the phones for the Visitor Information Center, but we all do that. We all are designing that. And so if you see in that document, it says absorbed by the Chamber. So what I did is I took the lowest minimum wage that we could actually pay somebody right now, and I just based it out over the fact that of those 40 hours a week, some, if we had hired somebody at that, they would be doing that full-time. So I obviously pay my accountant and my, and Randy, you know, a little bit, little bit more than that, not much. So I think it is, yeah, so I think that's a pretty accurate number.
All right. Now, the way you calculated the rent in conjunction with Mr. Schultz, that made sense. But the staffing did not quite make sense to me. So is the $26,000 one-third of your total staffing cost? I mean, you were saying that the rent was.
One-third of my total staffing cost. No. It's less, I mean, it's, if I add that up, it's probably less than that. But I think the time we spend on visitor town services would equal, you know, I think what we do even out of the office or at events or all of that, I think, equals that number. We really did deliberate that today, and we thought, okay, if we go with the lowest wage and then the 40 hours a week, you know, you could.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none. Councilmember Seok.
Understanding that you're using the same staff, how, I guess what I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out is how clean we can distinguish work that you're doing for the Chamber versus Visitor Information, right? And so if you have a total FTE of three, realistically, would one FTE? If someone were to be hired only for Visitor Information, would that be, would that person be able to fill 40 hours? Because I, I understand how you calculated that. What I'm trying to figure out is, is there enough work for a 40-hour to justify one person? Understanding that you're really taking, and that's where I'm having trouble figuring out how much is actually done for Visitor Information versus Chamber. The way you've laid out the cost with dining guide, lodging, all that makes sense. I'm just stuck at that staff person.
So I think another way to look at it, which we did today as well, is if the town hired that person to do it, you would have to add on all the benefits and the health insurance. So that $1,250 in that sense would go way up, first of all. So we don't have any of those benefits at the Chamber of Commerce, so it's just people who are there working on it at an hourly rate. I think the, the designing and the distribution and all of those things, I mean, I think I could certainly, I could hire somebody for that job, and I could, at this point, at this, in our, where we are, I could have that person working 40 hours a week doing just town Visitor Information Services, for sure. Do we do that all the time? No, but I have probably a more professional staff who can do other things as well. So again, that's how I kind of based it as I brought it back down. I did want to bring up one other thing, which I guess I'm not supposed to do this, but interestingly, Nick from Nick's, you know, restaurant came in today because he was talking about this social media thing as well. And he said, you know, are you also, the Visitor Information Center, he said, you're not just, and he's not very involved at the Chamber or the Food and Wine Group, so it was interesting that he came in. And he said, he said he saw the social media marketing campaign, and he said, I just want to make sure that you're appealing and reminding our locals how special our town is. And it was a really good point. So it wasn't, you know, so that social media campaign, whatever that takes on, and, and the Visitor Information Center is not just for visitors. It really is an information center, and it's a way of attracting our people, our residents, who live here and reminding them, don't leave Los Gatos. Come and enjoy what we have here. So there, there really is an underlying campaign that's going on on that as well that I think I'll really try to develop a little bit more as well.
Thank you very much. I have no more cards. That closes public hearing on that. We'll move to council for a discussion and our motion. Mr. Rennie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, when I, I think about this, I think about all the things we're trying to do to keep our downtown vibrant and support our businesses. We're going to be spending a bunch of money on a one-way pilot and we're going to be putting in some parklets and we've gone through the discussion of allowing others to put in parklets and we're spending money on a parking study to try to figure out, you know, what, what can we do for parking to help our, our downtown vibrancy? We've put money in to potentially make streetscape changes, you know, there's many things, and we've been spending a lot of time looking at, at our ordinances and, and reducing some of the bureaucracy. And then I, I think, you know, the chamber, I, I think about the chamber and it's a $15,000 request, which is very small in, in consideration of how much, you know, budgeted money and how much staff time we, we spend. And I think about the chamber several years ago and where, and then versus today, and I, I, I believe the chamber is doing, you know, a, a great job. I really think they are making a difference in Los Gatos. And so adding $15,000 to their budget, it, it seems like an easy high return for us compared to a lot of the other money that, that we spend and, and time and effort. So I would make a motion that we increase it to $55,000 for the, the visitor center.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? I have a question for staff. So Ms. Summers said that she wants $55,000, but she also said something about the Leadership Los Gatos Program. Our staff report says $45,000 inclusive of the Leadership Los Gatos Program. So her request is $55,000 and we work out the leadership program later?
I believe her request is $55,000 just for the Visitors Information Center. And then, I'm not clear if, she said it would come up later and it didn't, I'm not clear if she's still good with the $4,000 coordination fee for leadership or if they were looking for the $5,000. So as far as the request there, what I see is attachment to ask for $5,000 with $2,000 for expenses and what we're, we're recommending is $4,000 and $1,000.
So essentially, the, the amount would be $60,000 or $59,000 or whatever potentially if they agreed to some number on the leadership program?
That's correct.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
I have a question. Mr. Rennie, your motion was $55,000, correct?
What I, I specifically said, increase the visitor center allocation from $40,000 to $55,000. That didn't touch the other allocation. I, if you'd like different numbers, I'm, I'm happy to adjust.
I just want to make sure that the scope of your motion, as I understand, it's limited to the visitor center, correct? Just making sure.
That's correct.
Okay. So I will reluctantly second this motion, and I'll tell you why. The council budget and the council asks have been a moving target for the last, I'd say, two years. And it's very, very frustrating when this council is trying to do so much for the chamber and the businesses, as Mr. Rennie summarized, $1 million into a capital fund for the downtown, streamlining business regulations, outdoor seating, alcohol and entertainment, any number of things, the pilot program, the parklet program that we've just approved, are all efforts that this council is taking that are not free, that are, we are trying to do what we can to promote our downtown and our businesses actually throughout town. So it's very frustrating to be here and go through a budget hearing where we have people ask us for things that are as small as $5,000 or $3,000 for good programs and have the chamber come every meeting and ask us for more money. And I understand that you're working hard and that you're doing things, and I don't object to that. But my reluctance in seconding the motion is, I think that I'll come the next meeting and there'll be another request. And I also don't want the council's decision to deny a request, for example, for the media campaign, to then be buried into a request for the visitor center that ends up being the media campaign. So, not saying that that's what you're doing, but it gets very frustrating. So it, it seems kind of interesting that I'm seconding this motion, but I'm hoping that this will be the end and that the chamber will go forth and convince business owners that the council is getting frustrated and that they need to do a business improvement district.
Councilmember Spector.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to support the motion, but I totally agree with Ms. Jensen. The requests have been a moving target. We don't allow anybody else to do that. Those of you who were here when we had our nonprofit request, heard how important those requests were for the community. Those requests were made in a timely fashion, done in the right process, and yet many of them were reduced or refused. So I think following the process is important, especially as was pointed out, in light of the fact that this council has contributed, I can't even remember it all, but, you know, $1 million from the budget for general, generally, and then for the other line items that Ms. Jensen pointed out. So all of those things have been done already. And one of the things that I keep waiting for is to find out how the Business Assessment District or the bid is doing and Improvement District. And I, last I heard, it was a work in process. So I'm looking for, I understand what the council is doing for the chamber. I think that's a good thing. But what I'm looking for from the chamber is, one, a report back on the Business Improvement District and how that is going forward and proceeding, and I'm hoping vigorously. And I would also be looking for adherence to the process, because we need to treat everybody and each organization fairly and equally.
Councilmember Seok.
A question and then a comment. The question of staff, assuming the allocation is made, would the contract then be revised so that the change and the increases would, the contract would reflect the increases so that we're clear what funds are going to what purpose?
We could update the contract and the scope of services and then we would bring that back to you on consent at your next meeting.
Okay. And then my comment, so I think we can all agree that the partnership that we've had with Visitor Information Center and the chamber has been one that, that is of benefit to the entire town, and we've seen tremendous, I think tremendous progress. One of the things that I want to be cognizant of is that, and I'm not implying that it is, but I just want to reiterate that the visitor information centers for the entire town and that we need to, we need to be mindful of the other business districts throughout the town. And so when I'm looking at the various line items, I want to just reaffirm, and I'll have staff do that when the contract, that the dining guide includes non-chamber, non-downtown businesses. And, and I ask you to really think about the banner hanging and the holiday decorations. Again, what else can we do so that we have our visitors understand that we have more business districts, more neighborhoods, so that it's not always so focused on downtown and that we could really emphasize that we're a town of many acres, of many different neighborhoods, of many different business districts, and that it's not always going to be concentrated money in one particular area. So I, I really ask staff and, and the chamber to look at how those funds will be used so that there's an emphasis that this is a town-wide effort and that we are really looking at all of our businesses to thrive, whether or not they're chamber members.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I'll call the question, all in favor? I opposed. None have passed unanimously. Moving on to item number 11, which is the consideration of adopting a resolution initiating annexation of certain unincorporated county pockets, islands within the town of Los Gatos, urban service areas pursuant to section 56757 and 56375.3 of the California Government Code. Mr. Andrews.
Thank you, Mayor. And Town Council, the item before you is a continuation of a conversation that started in February. Based on the fact that annexation of unincorporated urban pockets has been a strategic priority for this council for some time, staff brought a report in February that outlined the state legislated streamlined annexation process. Back in 2001, the state recognizing the inefficiency of unincorporated urban islands, continued existence in municipalities, they created legislation that created this streamlined process. Since our meeting in February, staff has moved forward with initiating that process. There's several aspects of it that need to be followed pretty precisely based on guidelines from LAFCO and also based on the guidelines in the legislation. Tonight's meeting is actually one of those guidelines. This meeting tonight is actually to discuss and potentially adopt a resolution initiating the streamlined process. Leading up to tonight, after the last meeting in February, staff moved forward with community outreach. One of the first things we did was develop a website. We identified all 308 parcels in the urban unincorporated islands that are under discussion tonight. We sent a courtesy letter to all 308 households informing them of council's decision in February and also informing them of the process and also informing them of a community meeting that we would put together at the JCC. We also let them know once again that these two meetings were going to occur and that this was really a procedural process that was now owned by the town as opposed to staff, as opposed to LAFCO or any other entity. We held the community meeting. As the staff report states, we had a multitude of our directors there to help field any questions. We had approximately 19 members attend the meeting, two of which self-identified as residents of the Blossom Manor, which is not a topic of discussion tonight. After the meeting, based on some of the feedback we got, we actually added another addition to our website, frequently asked questions. And then as we started to move forward and more of the public engagement based on the rules of the legislation in LAFCO, that's when we started doing a significant notification process. That process entailed sending out 2,600 mailers twice, one to notice this meeting and one to notice the meeting on the 18th. Those 2,600 mailers not only included the residents within the islands, but also included buffer zones, that included every registered voter in, within those buffer zones and also within the islands. Based on those mailers, newspaper advertisements, based on the community meeting and the initial letter we sent out, to date, we received about six inquiries on those first initial outreach efforts. And then after we did the mailings based on the LAFCO guidelines, we received about one more inquiry. That's all captured in the, in the staff report. In addition, in the report, you see some of the economics associated with the discussion that we're having this evening. And with that, staff is available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Councilmember Spector.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Andrews, you sort of touched upon this. How many households are in, homes? How many, you know, households are in the targeted islands? You said 2,600, it was less than 2,600.
Correct. So there's, there's actually 308 unique households in the islands under discussion tonight. So the first courtesy mailing that went out was to each one of those households. But once you start following the LAFCO guidelines to be able to use the streamlined process, you have to really expand the area, the geographic area of notification. And that was 2,600 households for each notification, so 2,600 households twice.
But there were 300 that would, could be annexed?
Correct.
All right. And?
308.
Okay. That's percent. And how, how many households came to the meeting at the JCC? Households?
Uh, households, I don't know. We had 19 people in attendance. Some of the folks in attendance were probably, you know, residents of the same household of those 19 residents, as I mentioned during the Q and A. Two of them self-identified as residents of the Manor.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Rennie.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Andrews, so in the staff report, there's, there's a line that says, counties exist primarily to provide various health services, human services and law and justice services. The overwhelming majority of the county's budget is used for these purposes. And then the next paragraph starts off, providing urban services to neighborhoods will continue to be a diminishing county role. Can you elaborate on that? What does that mean?
Sure. So one of the reasons not only did we get the state legislation in 2001, but why almost 35 years ago, the county, the 15 cities within the county and at the formation of LAFCO, the understanding was that there's an inefficiency associated with still having these unincorporated pockets. And the reason that is, is just as the memo and you cited, the county's primary purpose is health provision, the sheriff's office, the jail system and things of that nature. Municipalities, because we're closer to the residents that we serve, we primarily create the services that are more, you know, immediate to the residents in that neighborhood, whether it's garbage services, whether it's, you know, street maintenance and things of that nature. And so, and by the way, that language came straight out of a, of a prior county document. And so the county has recognized that as these pockets continue to diminish in size, they're just going to put less effort and capacity towards servicing these types of residential areas, because it just becomes way too inefficient for them to do it.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Following up on Mr. Rennie's question, either from Mr. Andrews or Chief DeSena, thank you for being here, on the inefficiencies in having county pockets, is it more efficient for the police, Los Gatos, Montes Reno Police Department to be able to have fully incorporated areas that it serves within the town rather than bouncing back and forth between the sheriff? And for either one of you, if we do annexation, how does that help hurt or is it indifferent for, we've been talking a lot about emergency preparedness and fires, how does it help or hurt to have those areas annexed for, for example, fire protection?
Thank you for the question, Pete DeSena, Chief of Police. I think, I can't really answer for fire protection. I can say unequivocally that the, the police services that the residents or incoming residents will get will be far superior. I will work very closely with the sheriff's office. There is some jurisdictional issues that are resolved typically by the dispatchers, but I, I say at this point, with this particular annexation, it's really not going to impact our ability to serve our community and also to serve this, the pockets that we're going to be annexing.
And, and I'll just add, from a straight provision of fire services, right now, everybody receives fire services from Santa Clara County Fire, and so in that regard, it'll be seamless. I will say, from an emergency preparedness standpoint, when you start thinking in terms of mutual aid, this would absolutely create efficiencies in terms of, for us as the town of Los Gatos, when we have to respond to an emergency, knowing exactly where our response is going to be and what our area of responsibility is prior to having to reach out for mutual aid.
All right. We'll move on to the, Councilmember Seok.
Okay. So given 308 potential households could be incorporated in, question for town manager and for our police chief, do we have adequate services to, to serve 308 households?
Yes, we believe we do, because of the way the geography is, and this is one of the reasons why we're going after the islands that are particularly within and completely surrounding the town. And in the future, if we find that we have an increase in demand, then that would be a future budget discussion, but at this point, we believe we can adequately serve.
All right. Seeing no more questions, we'll open up the public hearing on this item. I have one speaker card, Helen Stone. If anybody else wishes to speak, please come forward, Helen. Then please turn in a card.
My name is Helen Stone, and I just, I just want to, I, I'm one of the 308 homes, and we don't want to be annexed. This was attempted in 2005, and you got the response that people in these pockets do not want to be annexed. We're happy where we are. We don't want our property rights messed with. And that's really all I have to say is, I think that it should be voted on, let the people decide, and you shouldn't be making those decisions without talking to people. I never got the letter about the meetings at the JCC, and I did get the cards that you just sent, but I didn't, I never received any other information that you're speaking of, just for the record. Thank you.
We have a question for you, Ms. Stone.
Yes.
Vice Mayor.
I just want, I was asking, going to ask for your address.
16392 Shady View Lane.
Thank you.
I don't want any money, by the way, too.
I'm not going to give you any.
Okay. Yes.
Councilmember Specter?
Thank you. As I understand what you said, your concern seems to be property rights. Is that correct?
Correct. And the taxation that I know that you're going to put on us, too.
All right. And what is your understanding of the property? What do you mean by property rights? How's that going to hurt you?
Well, you, you can come in when we are doing building or remodeling, and then we don't, we have to go through your process and not the county. That's a huge, huge undertaking. And we don't want it. We don't want to be a part of that.
And how is the taxation going to hurt you?
Oh, I'm sure that it will be increased. I have no doubt. And, you know, we don't, we don't want that extra taxation. We don't need another level of government over us. We're just fine where we are.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Seok?
I'm sorry. And the question is process-wise for you. As we hear information that we think that would be helpful, clarification from staff, can I ask staff to clarify?
I think that's a good idea.
Okay. And so, is, is that correct or is that incorrect, that there would be additional property taxes imposed on these homes that are being annexed?
Thank you for the question, both from the Speaker and from the Councilmember. In the materials that are posted, both online and available for pickup at the town clerk's office, staff did a side-by-side comparison of multiple properties in multiple areas of the different islands. And what we did is, all the information is available at the county assessor's office. You're able to just punch in addresses, and literally I pull up the exact tax bill that you receive in the mail, and I'm able to see every line-by-line item. And so, I, I spent some time just where I had a county pocket resident here and across the street, a Town of Los Gatos resident, which is the case in a lot of these islands. We have a lot of folks just living side-by-side. And each iteration I did, I, it basically came to the same conclusion, which is it's actually a slight tax decrease for a Town of Los Gatos resident. You can see every one of the mill rates on each one of these property tax bills, and so the bills are broken into three buckets. The first bucket comes to the total assessed rates. And so, for a Santa Clara County resident, the rate comes to 1.1595. And then for a Town of Los Gatos resident, it comes out to basically 1.1571. So, a minor reduction, but it's still a, a reduction, and it's definitely not a, an increase. And then there's another section of the property tax bills that are referred to land and improvements. There's really only one rate there. It's the Santa Clara Valley Water Rate, and it's the exact same for both jurisdictions as .0042 for both. And then they have another section referred to as Taxes and Fees. And when you look at Tax and Fees section, while there are minor differences really related to the library parcel tax, the library tax that the county residents pay, whereas we don't pay one, and then slight differences related to the West Valley Sanitation District, in every iteration, it still came up that it's slightly less for a Los Gatos resident. For the average county resident, that portion of the tax bill is about $1,040. And for a Los Gatos resident, the average tax bill for that portion is $1,027. And then in regards to, you know, doing remodeling and working with the county versus working with the town, the Director of Community Development had his staff do a side-by-side comparison, working with the county. And we basically put together a model where we said, you know, for a 500-square-foot single-story addition, what would the differences be in building permit fees? So, the county provided every one of their fees to us, and then our staff generated what the fees would have been if you had walked into our counter. And there, it is a slight increase for the, for the town, but I would also point out that there will probably be efficiencies associated with the process. So, for a town building permit for a 500-square-foot single-story addition, it worked out to And for the exact same permitting at the county level, it was $4,531. So, roughly about a $200 difference there.
Vice Mayor?
Following, thank you, Councilwoman Seok, for allowing us to do this. Following up on the remodel question, don't we have an agreement with the county that for various remodels that you're now required to annex to Los Gatos? Once you do the remodel, I know that's happening on Englewood, so Mr. Paulson, I see you have the microphone, but what's our agreement and what's the requirement for actually annexation when you do a remodel?
Yes. Thank you for the question. So, generally, someone will go to the county, and if they end up being a demolition or wanting to do a subdivision, and they are either contiguous to the town or within 300 feet of a town-owned roadway, then they're required to annex into the town. So, it's typically not a remodel. It's generally a new house. The county has different demolition definitions than the town does. And actually, this evening, you just modified those to make those more streamlined, so they're actually less stringent than the counties. But those are the things that we're working towards, and so those are generally the two big ones where someone individually has to annex and pay those fees, hire a surveyor, and come through that process.
So, Mr. Paulson, I have a follow-up question for you on that very same topic. It is my understanding that if this annexation of these 308 households is accepted this evening, all the individuals would know, would not have to pay those annexation fees as part of this process?
That's correct. They wouldn't pay any annexation fees, and they wouldn't have to hire surveyors to do any of the land surveying work that's required for an annexation.
So, what in general would that cost those homeowners if they, what, what savings would they benefit from annexation in this instance?
I don't have that as handy as Mr. Andrews probably does, but I think absent the surveying work, it's somewhere in the neighborhood of 7,500. Mr. Andrews, I believe that might be on your FAQ that you have.
That, that's correct. We've been quoting 7,900 as the fee, basically, abatement that would occur with this process. By doing this process as an all-in-one process, LAFCO is able to waive fees, the county is able to waive fees, and then the town is also waiving fees.
Thank you. Are there any more questions for Ms. Stone? Thank you for standing up there so patiently. The next speaker is Paul, it looks like Paul Graham.
Yes, right here. Yes, I'm in one of the pockets and just have some concerns. The town is really good. It takes care of the central town really, really well, and thank you for that. But as you get away from the town, it seems that we don't get the same level of help and support, like, for example, the North Forty fiasco, where most people were opposed, and we have, now we have the North Forty with all the traffic and congestion and so on and so forth. You just go up Los Gatos Boulevard during the commute time, and it's just packed. And there are some other instances, or like, for example, there's a commercial building proposed on Los Gatos Boulevard and Sharon Road. It's going to be like 30 feet high, and the setback is like five feet from the sidewalk. I pity the six residents who are close to that building. Across the street on Los Gatos, where they have the Roberts and Mitchell Road, where they built those 30 houses on two acres, and the back of the houses, you know, kind of face the, face everybody. So, it seems that the town takes care of the town really, really well, and they build expensive subterranean garage for the merchants and everything, but as you get out of the town, we get less, less, less services. But kind of, well, less emphasis or concern. I know that in the past, we voted against annexation when this, when this was attempted two times before, and now we don't even get to vote on it. It seems like we live in, we live in a democracy, and we should be allowed to vote, so the town would know if the people in the county pocket want to be annexed or not. And you're, and you're bypassing that. You're just annexing this against our will, because you know that if we did vote, you would probably be defeated, as it has two times in the past. I think the primary, and another opposition is, your fees are high. Like, for example, if I want to cut down a tree, it's $150 for a tree permit. If I, if I do any kind of substantial improvement on my property, I might have to pay the sidewalk fee, which is $16 a square foot. I have four, I have a, I have a thou, I have 100 feet. That's going to cost me like seven grand, you know, and I might not even get a sidewalk. It goes into this fund. And seven grand right there. And you have story pole, pole cost if you have to build something also. Also, it's kind of an infringement on your rights also, like you have restrictions on parking on your own driveway. Anyway, and you're getting, for the annexation, you're going to be getting a million dollars a year. That's what Mr. Andrews said, and it was documented. So, it seems like with this extra money, you should at least allow us to maybe give us a year or two to adjust to the increase in fees and maybe delay enforcement of some of the extra regulations, some of the extra fees for a year or two to allow us to adjust if you annex us against our will.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Question was, we'll start with Councilmember Seok.
I was just curious, sir, your address, so we can get a sense of the pockets.
Peacock Lane.
Peacock Lane. Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Specter?
That was my question also. Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, Mr. Graham. Oh, Councilmember Specter?
This is not for Mr. Graham, but it relates to Mr. Graham.
Okay.
The staff have any input on the testimony as it relates to trees, sidewalks, story poles?
I'll handle some of them, and then I'll turn to our other directors to help me with some of the other questions. Sidewalks was a very prominent issue at the community meeting, and Director Morley and Director Paulson tried to help guide that conversation. No one at the town is proactively going to force residents to create sidewalks. A sidewalk usually, a sidewalk discussion usually occurs when a resident has come to say they're proposing some type of a major renovation. And so, in the frequently asked questions, you know, we did spell out that no one is going to proactively be forced to put in sidewalks. However, if you do come with some type of significant renovation, if it's compatible with your neighborhood, meaning if there are other sidewalks in your neighborhood, then we would probably ask for sidewalks to be part of the project. If there is no other sidewalks in the neighborhood, we're not going to create an incompatible neighborhood and have one house with a sidewalk in front of it, and that's where the concept of an in-loof fee comes in. You would provide the in-loof fee to make sure that we enhance the safety of the sidewalk infrastructure and the remainder of the, the town. In regards to story poles, you know, one of the benefits of annexation that I think gets lost sometimes is the Speaker talked about what's happening on Los Gatos Boulevard. Los Gatos Boulevard is not an unincorporated part of the town. It's part of the town, and I think it speaks to the fact that we're really all Los Gattans. At the end of the day, annexation will actually give you a voice in those discussions. You'll be able to vote. You'll be able to be participants on commissions that decide these ideas and talk about how our town's going to evolve and, and grow. And so, I, I think that's a concept that gets lost sometimes. In terms of story poles on a property, I will turn to directors for that.
Thank you, Joel Paulson, Community Development Director. So, the town has a story pole policy, as the council is all aware. As we move forward, those are required when someone does either a second-story addition or a new house. Again, I'll mention this evening, we modified our demolition regulations to make them less stringent than they were before, so that hopefully more projects will be able to go through a building permit process rather than having to go through a discretionary review process.
So, I have a question. When you compare story pole, does the county have a story pole program as well?
I don't believe that the county requires story poles.
And then the other point that the Speaker made about previous two times, they had the voice, they could vote whether they wanted to be annexed or not. But again, it was described that the state laws have changed for these smaller pockets, and could you describe a situation where they would still be entitled to vote? How many parcels or how many acres or whatever in, in a county pocket?
I can, I can speak to that. So, the, the legislation as it stands is for pockets under 150 acres. There's currently three pockets in the town that are over 150 acres. One of them is Blossom Manor, and the other two are in the hillsides. Of the pockets we're discussing tonight, the largest is actually 40 acres, and the smallest is .1 of an acre. So, we're talking about pockets that are considerably smaller than the legislation even allows. And the legislation was enacted because of the unified belief of the inefficiencies and the disservice that actually happens to unincorporated residents because of the lack of a coherent service delivery, the lack of representation in governance, and the other issues that have been mentioned tonight.
Thank you. Next speaker, Mary Reiser, Reister?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, good evening. I had a question about the increase in taxes, and that has been answered. But I would like to comment, if the property taxes would be increased because of annexation, then I would be opposed to it. And then I have a question, if you could explain the sections of the California Government Code that's referred to in the resolution?
So, if you could answer Ms. Reister's questions, first about whether or not the property tax would be increased because of annexation, and then the Government Code in the report she's referring to?
Thank you. In answer to the first question, there is nothing about annexation that triggers a reassessed valuation of properties. All properties are assessed and will remain assessed at their existing levels. One of the items that you have to do as you move through the streamline process is first, we reach out to the county surveyor. The county surveyor does a, a survey to determine that all these residential properties are actually within the town boundaries and are actually within, you know, the urban island where we believe them to be. And then the next thing that happens is the county assessor then sends us the entire assessment roll for every one of the islands and every one of the individual properties. And those are the exact same assessments that you received on your last property tax bill, provided the county assessor hasn't done anything to change the assessed value. But nothing about annexation triggers a reassessment of any kind.
Okay.
And then in answer to the second question, so, the resolution lays out these very specific section codes, which is 56757 and 56375.3, because those are the sections of the code that actually relate to what's referred to as the streamlined annexation process. The state in 2001, when they first created the legislation, it was to make this process simpler, and it is a process that was created to remove an election and a protest that would normally occur with the larger annexations of larger, of islands. Currently, those are considered to be 150-plus. So, for instance, Blossom Manor, which is over 150 acres, if the town were inclined to move forward with annexation of that island, that would have to be done through a different process, which would actually require an election.
We have a question for staff or the Speaker? Okay?
Both, both Speaker and staff. I'm going to be the one to ask you your address.
16524 Topping Way.
Okay. Thank you. And now, I'm totally blanking, I'm sorry, on the question I was going to ask you.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, is it Deborah Wagner?
Hi.
Ms. Wagner, if you can pull the microphone over?
Hi. Yes, I've been a resident of Los Gatos since 1980 and lived in the town for about 12 years and about 25 years in the county. And I've always had a very good response from the county, the Sheriff's Department or any problems that we've had. In any case, Los Gatos likes to try to see, to present themselves as more responsive to the residents of the neighborhood. And in this case, I would like to point out that we have been subject to extreme construction on my street. I live on 16374 High Low Road, and it's just been obnoxious. In any case, part of the, the insensitivity that I think should be brought to the attention of the town is the fact that the work hours for construction are 12 hours a day, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and Saturdays, nine to three, and Sundays and holidays. In fact, the inspector wasn't even aware that they weren't supposed to work on holidays. And in comparison to other cities in Los Gatos, I mean, excuse me, in Santa Clara Valley, in fact, in the county, you can only work from 7:00 to 6:00, and, and 9:00 to 3, excuse me, 9:00 to 5:00 on Saturdays, no holidays, no Sundays ever. And we have been just bombarded. I, I feel like I've had three years of harassment with this construction. There has been just accidents. I almost had flashings go into my windows. And in spite of the construction and calling on people to code enforcement and the like, it's just, you just have to get used to it. It's the construction. It's going to be over soon. There, there was nothing constructive done about the situation. I had them harassing me. constructive done about the situation. I had them harassing me, and also, they were playing music constantly. And practically every other town has specific residential construction hours and commercial construction hours. And Los Gatos doesn't. They just lump everything into construction hours. So I'm not really happy with being part of the town because of the fact that we weren't able to vote. I never received the JCC notice. I received three notices for tonight's meeting, but never received a JCC notice. And I've always received much better treatment from the county's office than I have from the Police Department of Los Gatos. I would like you to take that into consideration and perhaps make some changes for the better of the residents that are already here.
Thank you, Ms. Wagner. Questions? I would like to address what Ms. Wagner said. It sounds to me, well, I, I'm not sure what our hours are exactly for our, our construction, if we can comment on it.
12 hours a day, seven days a week.
So Joel Paulson, Community Development Director, our construction hours, as Ms. Wagner stated, are 8:00 to 8:00, Monday through Friday, and 9:00 to 7:00, Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays.
Okay, thank you. And I don't know if staff could follow up with Ms. Wagner, if there are any code enforcement issues going on in that regard with what's been happening.
There's been several.
Yes, staff has been in touch with Ms. Wagner on multiple occasions.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Ms. Wagner. Next speaker is Roy Moses.
Good evening, council, mayor. Nice to be here again. I really didn't know about this annexation until one of my neighbors came around with this little flyer. I guess I must be living in a hole someplace, I don't know, but I did not get any notification that was anything at the JCC. I think that's terrible. I think the city should be, and I didn't see anything in the newspaper. I read newspapers, our local paper every day 'cause I'm a Realtor, and it's full of Realtor ads, I wanna see who's doing business in there, but I didn't see anything about annexation. So I think it's very poor on your behalf trying to do what you're doing without informing the whole public that annexation is gonna take place. I live in the city and have, 'cause the little pocket that I bought 50 years ago is on 16529 La Croix Court, and I'm surrounded by the county. That's fine. People have been great, whatever. Fortunately, somebody just bought a county property right next to me, behind me. They did not put up a two-story building, thank God. They had really nice people doing the work, and I didn't have all this noise that this poor lady over here is talking about. And I'm just totally surprised about the hours of construction for this city. That is unheard of and should be taken care of by somebody. Anyway, that being said, my good friend Jeannie, who had to leave earlier because she takes care of a senior citizen, and she had to go, and she didn't realize that we were at the bottom of the agenda today, so I said, yes, I'd be happy to stand up for you, Jeannie, who lives in the county. And just, her concern is what was brought up by many of the people here already. The taxation issues, which have been answered, the other things about how it's gonna affect the other communities, is it gonna, I mean, not the communities, but the other neighborhoods, being the city, et cetera. And so her, she asked some questions in here on this flyer that she put out to the people, and she wanted to ask you tonight, and I think they've been answered. I'll try to relate, relate them to her, because Ms. Stone over here is a good friend of hers as well, and she lives on Shady View Lane, which is right behind me. Her, her house is not directly behind me. But I think for the consideration of everybody, my son is a firefighter, yes, they do cover this whole county, they do a fantastic job. The police, we call the city police, they always respond to us. We happen to be in a court, which is a blessing, but we've had crazy people trying to do wheelies up there. But I understand that a lot of people have responded, because the county, they're in a county pocket, and the county police show up, but sometimes they say the city police don't show up and vice versa. So everybody has their complaints here and there. But all of you, and who's ever leading this, needs to take into consideration, I think you'd better call another public meeting and get everybody there. I know you're gonna have pros and cons and back and forth, but explaining, the way you're explaining it, they may accept all of these issues that you have, but to create dismay within our, our citizenry here, I think is, is a real sin. So I would try to address that in some case, somehow, some fashion.
Thank you, Mr. Moses. Questions? I have a question for staff. Mr. Moses alluded to whether or not we put a notification in the newspaper, the local paper. Did we do anything? What, or what notifications have we done?
We, we did. So typically, we'll do one notification in, in one paper, well, one notification for each meeting. Because of the magnitude of this decision, we thought it was appropriate to actually expand that. So this time, we actually did notifications in the Los Gatos Weekly, and then we also did notifications in the Merc, because perhaps some of the county residents might be more inclined to read the San Jose Mercury News versus the Los Gatos Weekly, so we wanted to cover as many bases as we could. We've heard a couple times this evening that folks received green cards, but not the letter. The addresses for the letter were incorporated in the same green card mailing, so I'm not exactly sure what happened there, but all the addresses in the initial courtesy letter were addresses that were also incorporated in the 5,200 mailings that, that went out.
And one more follow-up question. We had the meeting at the JCC, so there was notifications for the JCC. We had two meetings, is that correct? Two opportunities for the same type of meeting?
We had one kind of courtesy community meeting. When we first sent out the letter to all 308 residences, we just wanted to inform people that, you know, council had taken a decision on February 5th that was gonna start a dialogue, and we wanted them to be informed of their opportunities to engage in that dialogue. We thought it would be good, rather than wait for these meetings, the council meetings, which are also publicly noticed, to go ahead and put together a community meeting. So we did have one community meeting, and then in that same letter, we also noticed these two meetings. So we let every resident know that there would be, at a minimum, three opportunities to engage.
Councilmember Specter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Following up on that, the request that staff is suggesting in our motion is to initiate annexation. What, if that went forward, what would the next step or steps be? And I'm specifically looking for opportunities to hear from the public.
Thank you for the, the question. So the, the language is written that way, and it's very formulaic because of the state law and the guidelines provided by LAFCO. This evening is actually another public meeting. At the beginning of the meeting, in the, in the recommendation language, it actually says, open a public meeting. And then the resolution, if adopted by council tonight, says, we are initiating the streamlined annexation process on June 18th, which would be another opportunity for public comment. If the council then adopts that resolution, that resolution will state, Town Council of Los Gatos adopts annexation through the streamlined process and with the following findings. Most of the findings are actually incorporated in this resolution, but then there are some very specific findings that have to be incorporated in the next resolution, including attesting to the fact that none of the properties are agricultural land and things of that nature. In discussions with LAFCO, we already meet all those findings.
All right, to simplify this, though, if we need to make a decision, we council need to make a decision this evening. If we move forward, the next opportunity for the public would then be on June 18th.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct. And, and tonight's decision just keeps the process going. It would be the decision on the 18th, which would actually solidify the annexation.
Understood. And what is the notification for the, the 18th, if the item is on the agenda?
Sorry. I'll defer to our clerk on that, but we do all the proper public noticing requirements, include posting on our exterior bulletin boards. I believe we've already done the mailer noticing that meeting for June 18th. That's the two batches of 2,600. In addition, when we did the newspaper ads, we also did the noticing for the June 18th meeting in the newspaper ads.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Those are my questions.
Thank you. Marshall Smith?
Mayor, council. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I wanna address the question of changes in regulations and ordinances that are gonna be imposed, that you have, that we don't encounter with the county. And so I haven't seen anything like that. The property that we have, my family, that I'm referencing is 16412 Peacock Lane. And so it'd be nice to know what regulations the town has that we are not, that we don't have with the county.
So I guess there would be some kind of a matrix somewhere, perhaps, demonstrating the, the differences, the key differences. It would be difficult to get each and every one, I would imagine.
Correct. So what, what staff has done is on the website for annexation, on the town's website, what we've done is we've created a link for the town's annually adopted fees and charges, so that residents, if there is a specific fee they're interested in, they can find what the town charges versus, and then they can contact the county versus what they charge. Based on the feedback we received at the community meeting, and then the limited emails we've received to date, we went ahead and put together the example that I cited before for a 500-square-foot addition. And then we've also created a whole host of other links. For instance, leaf blowers came up. It hasn't been brought up this evening, but that is an area of differentiation between ourselves and the county, as we don't allow gas leaf blowers. And so we've put links to specific questions like that also.
Councilmember Specter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Smith, were, is, is that the kind of differentiation you were looking for, or were you looking for building, development kind of distinctions?
No, I'm looking for any distinction that is different, or a regulation that we're gonna be, that's gonna be imposed upon us, that's different from what the county has. What you're addressing there is three specific areas, but I'm sure there are other areas that are different from the county.
All right, thank you.
So a comment on that, it would be difficult, I would believe. In, in other words, the town has a policy on bees or something, we have a policy on chickens, we have all kinds of things like this. It would be difficult to know all the idiosyncrasies of all these ordinances for the town versus the county. Is it possible?
It, it, it could be possible, but it's probably not practical. So what we've been doing is just responding to any communications we've received. For instance, there was a communication about access to libraries, you know, if the, the resident was actually in support of annexation, but wanted to make sure that they could still utilize county libraries. And so the library director helped formulate a response and ensured, you know, assured that individual that they would be able to use the entire library system. At the community meeting, the frequently asked questions, that is also part of our annexation website, really all came out of the types of comments we were receiving at that meeting. I've received other comments, I received comments about bees again after the community meeting, and so we sent them the link. In addition, we added the link on our frequently asked questions. We do allow bees and chickens. We do apparently have a more regulated environment than perhaps the, the county, but we do allow bees and chickens.
I think Mr. Paulson wants to...
Thank you, I'll just add a little bit, Mr. Smith's questions. Obviously, we would have to take the entire county code and try to cross-reference that with the entire town code, all the sections, not just the zoning section, and then all of the applicable policy documents that deal with that specific county pocket versus all of the policy documents that deal with it from the town side. So definitely not practical, not impossible, but not realistic from my standpoint, and I'm not sure if Ms. Pervetti has any additional comments.
Councilmember Specter?
Thank you. Well, following up on what Mr. Smith was saying, I, I would imagine that looking at county codes and town codes and identifying every single distinction might not be realistic. But what is realistic is to do what other members of our community have done, which is to, if you have issues or concerns, to send those into the town, and the town will answer those concerns. Correct?
That is, that is correct. We have responded in a communication today.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Jacqueline McDonald.
Hi, my name's Jacqueline McDonald. I live at 16595 Englewood Avenue, one of the pockets up on the east side. My main concern, I wanted to speak to, I believe it was Mr. Graham's point of having some sort of adjustment period, if this is going to hap, happen. I am against the annexation, but, you know, if it is a streamlined process and does go through, some sort of adjustment period, I think would be good. And my main concern, which is probably a question for staff, is what about permits that are currently open? Do they stay open in Santa Clara County until closed, or do those get automatically adopted by Los Gatos when they're annexed?
I'll let the Director Paulson speak to it, but there's close collaboration happening already between ourselves and our county counterparts about what's in the pipeline, what will remain in the pipeline. And then if council were to adopt the resolution this evening, and then if on June 18th, they were to adopt that resolution, then we would all start to collaborate more to actually talk with LAFCO about what would be an effective date. And Director Paulson, do you have anything more to add?
Thank you. So just for a little more clarification, if you have issued building permits and you're under construction, you would stay with the county until that project is completed. The challenge that you run into, as Mr. Andrews alluded to, is if you've started the planning process, where are you in their planning process? Or if you've started the building process, but the building permit has not been issued, those are the types of topics that myself, Mr. Andrews, and others will be discussing with the county, our county counterparts, and then figuring out something that's reasonable from both perspectives. The town, as well as the county, is not interested in having someone stuck in the middle of processes. Doesn't make any sense.
Okay, so yeah, I'm, I'm right at the fin, the final stage during the building permit, so I just wanted to clarify, if regulations were going to change in the middle of that process?
Absolutely not.
Okay, thank you for clarification. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. McDonald. So that is the last speaker card, if anybody else wishes. Seeing none coming forward, please come forward and you can fill out a card later, hand it to the clerk.
I'm Philip Blue Eye, I live on Englewood. And I know quite a few people on county that have bee hives. And from the existing regulation that the town has, I know you guys say, oh yeah, you can have bees in those gallows. But if you look at all the restrictions that accompanies your, or the regulation, you can't have bees in those gallows. You need to be, the list is long. There's so many, if you have this, you can't have, you know, if you're more than, less than 200 feet from the street, no. If your property is less than this, no. If you have a school nearby, no. If you have, so basically, you can't have bees in those gallows unless you live on, on the hills. So what are you gonna do for people, you know, that live in my neighborhood that have hives? That's my question.
All right, thank you. Do we have any questions for the speaker? Thank you. So that closes our public hearing. Councilmember Specter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna follow through with what we've done in the past. At this juncture, does anyone from staff have a, a bee answer?
Well, I would, I would just offer, and then if Mr. Andrews has anything else, yes, as I believe was mentioned before, the regulatory environment between the town and the county as it relates to bees is different. I know we had attempted to modify some other animal regulations previously, and bees was one of the topics that came up then. That is something that we could also try to readdress, whether that goes to policy committee for some discussion for potential modifications, or just comes through for a modification to the town code to relax some of those for specific instances, or finding some other mechanism for folks that currently have hives out there. And we would work closely with the town attorney's office on those options and bringing those forward.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Seauk?
Question of staff. Mr. Andrews, you had mentioned that you had, actually had received a letter or an email of support. Could you give us a flavor of some, it sounds like there are letters of support?
So of the seven communications that I received, either through phone call or email, two of them were in support. The communication initiated with questions.
Okay.
It'd follow-up conversations or emails, it became evident that, that they were in support. The other five communications, I would say only one gave a fairly specific "not in support." The others were just seeking information.
Vice Mayor?
Just wanted to follow up with that. So we've heard a lot about notification tonight. So there was the JCC meetings, the initial letter, 2,600, whatever it was, and so 5,200 mailings. Did, do I understand that you just said, out of all that, you got seven communications back?
That is correct, council member.
Thank you.
Mr. Rennie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So it's been mentioned, I think at, at least three times, I remember, maybe four, about a, a request to, to have an adjustment period for some of the regulation differences. So my, I mean, I kinda like that, it sounds fair to me. So my question for staff is, is that possible? If our other council members were interested, would you be able to figure something out?
I think that question probably has two components. I think that question probably has two components to it. There's our counterparties with the county that, similar to the conversation we just had about things that are already in the pipeline. The reason the county is an advocate of annexation is because they want closure, and so we will be able to work with them, I would say, to a certain extent, but at some point, they want to transition responsibilities to the town if we move through with annexation. That being said, this council is the governing body of the town, and you do have the latitude to either waive fees, give a grace period, if you were so inclined to do that. From staff's perspective, and, you know, trying to work through the very specific LAFCO guidelines, we are just proceeding with the streamlined annexation process as if everything is as it currently is.
And if I could just add, when we do have code compliance issues with the town, our approach is one of compliance. So we try, so for example, with gas leaf blowers, we, when we first initiated that ordinance and had it into effect, we went through a process where we informed the residents about, "Hey, this is coming, it's going to be in effect." And then we would typically give warning letters and then go forward with heavier-handed enforcement as needed. What we find is that our residents want to comply, so if they're educated and if they know what the rules are, they tend to follow them. So I think our code compliance approach would probably work towards the transition as Councilmember Rennie commented upon.
So if I could follow up a little, so leaf blower sound a little different because you're sort of, it's not infrastructure that's in place. If you have beehives, and all of a sudden, they're not allowed anymore, but the neighbors have all been in favor of them, and they've had them for a while, I mean, that's, that sounds like something that we should try to figure out ways to, you know, either give a much longer grace period, or look at ways of, you know, giving exemptions or something.
Yeah, and I think that would be something certainly we could talk about in our next priority setting, you know, do we want to actually loosen some of our regulations regarding bees and chickens, et cetera, or maybe other areas. I think the other point is that we're primarily complaint-based in terms of code compliance, so we're not going to proactively go to the newly annexed pockets and seek out whether or not somebody has a hive, but if there is a complaint, then we would do our research and investigation and follow through accordingly. I think what, our goal is to really welcome the pocket residents to Los Gatos and make it as easy for everyone as possible.
And I would just add, we've talked a lot about notification. If in fact, both of these resolutions passed by the council, we will create kind of a welcoming package, you know, to not only inform the residents once again that, okay, annexation did go through, annexation will be effective on a certain date, you know, welcome to the community. We're a very welcoming community for our residents, and we would make sure that they understand all the different vehicles that are available to them, whether it's through council referrals, however they can express their concerns while we're going through this transition, we'll make sure the new residents are aware of every one of those.
Thank you. Any more comments or questions or a motion? Councilmember Seauk?
I'm not prepared to make a motion, just a comment. I guess, following up on what Councilmember Specter said, I'm somewhat surprised, we have 308 households that may be incorporated, and to think that we had 19 in attendance, seven inquiries, and then just seven today. What I'm having difficulty is trying to get a sense of where our population, where are they on this issue? It's apparent that there's still some information that needs to be shared. I think the property tax is one, clearly, that is misunderstood. And so I'm hesitant to initiate, initiate just sounds so formal, right? Like, so there is one more opportunity for members of the public to weigh in. And so if a decision to initiate is made today, the 18th of meeting comes out and we hear more, there is one more opportunity for the public to weigh in, correct?
That is correct, and both meetings require a majority vote of the council, so you could have a majority vote of the council this evening to initiate the process, but if between now and the 18th, for some reason, the council thought that they were not inclined to move forward, you still have that option available to you on the 18th, and the community has an option, you know, between now and the 18th, to either review the information on our website, contact me directly.
And if I may, the seven inquiries and the 19 that were in attendance at the JCC meeting, did you get a sense of the address? If I'm looking at who's here today, it's a very specific neighborhood that's here today. And so do you have a sense of the other pockets that have expressed any questions or concerns or support?
So at the community meeting, we were trying to be cognizant if we had representation of, you know, all the main island groups that were under consideration, and so Rickonada, we did have a representative there from Rickonada. We had multiple residents from, you know, the larger geographic section with the multiple pockets, and then we actually did have representation from one of the pockets off of Blossom Hill. And so even though it was a small population, it would, we did have representation of each one of the large geographic areas we've been discussing.
Vice Mayor?
Oh, I was going to make a motion. I think we've had a pretty comprehensive discussion this evening, and it's been pointed out a number of times that whatever council, action the council takes tonight would be, if it chose to go forward, would be an initiation, quote unquote, which means to begin the process, there'd be another meeting on June 14th, June 19th, June 18th, I'm sorry, to determine whether or not actually we want to go through with it. So my motion is that we actually begin this process and adopt a resolution in initiating annexation of those unincorporated areas pursuant to the state law that cited in the staff report.
I will second the motion. I think if you look at the overall benefits, I think, of course, there's some concerns, which we've heard, and I think we've discussed some opportunities to alleviate some transitions moving forward. But I think the overall benefits probably would outweigh the detriments in this situation. So I'm going to move forward with a second on this. Councilmember Specter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Having sat through prior annexation hearings, and having listened to the people in the community, I have heard then, and I'm hearing now, there is a difference now. There's, part of it is because of the laws, and part of it is because I think, I'm hoping that the town is communicating more clearly that there is not a huge difference between being governed by the county versus the town, and in many instances, it is actually preferable to be part of the town. Of course, I think it's always preferable to be part of the town, but that's why I'm sitting up here. So I am going to suggest to all of you who are here this evening, or who are listening or watching on television, that if you have questions and have concerns, within the next two weeks, please contact staff and have your questions answered, have your concerns addressed.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Seauk?
I guess, from the beginning, I've been the one that's always hesitant about this, just because I don't get, I don't feel like I have a pulse of where people feel on this. So I will hesitate, I will, I will agree with the motion, but I do ask for those in attendance, please reach out to those of your neighbors that are unincorporated, and share your thoughts, whether it's a simple yes, simple no, and why, just so that we have more information, at least I have more information before the 18th moving forward. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Rennie?
I think I'll just echo that I, you know, in what I've heard, I'm not hearing many problems in it, and I guess I'm kind of a problem solver, so I'm, I want to echo that, yes, I'd like to hear from more people on, you know, what are the issues, what are the concerns? You know, I've heard several concerns that were, I think, allayed with the answers, but what are, what are more of the specifics that we need to address? So I'll be supporting the motion to continue the process, so we can continue to hear from people over the next two weeks.
Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll call the question. All in favor? Aye, opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Moving on to our council matters. Councilmember Seauk?
Nothing to report, just one thing I wanted to ask for future staff when that comes back. I didn't want to pull the budget, but I did want to thank staff for all the information that was provided the past month. You've been very helpful in sharing that information for me. What I would like, understanding that this process is very dynamic, there was a lot of conversation about what streets get paved with the 2.9 versus the 1.7. When we get our annual streets paving list, if you could just identify what will be funded with that 1.7 from January, that's on that $10 million reserve, just so then, again, the town is unclear with how the different funds go into the different streets and how that's happening.
Councilmember Specter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The water, I never remember the full name of it, but the Water Board met last week to consider the budget, and that budget was approved.
All right, since our last regularly scheduled meeting, I attended the West Valley Mayors and Managers Meeting. We discussed the ride program and its funding. I attended the Memorial Day Celebration out at Los Gatos Memorial Park with County Supervisor Mike Wasserman. Also attended the Kiwanis Turnaround Lunch with Councilmember Seauk and Councilmember Rennie. I had lunch with a child inventor, Darius, over at Alta Vista School, and I cut a ribbon on the Avet Spa downtown. Vice Mayor?
I don't have anything in the past to report, but I will be attending, as a town representative, the Association of Bay Area Governments Meeting in Oakland on Thursday. So if any of you have particular concerns that you want conveyed, I think the focus is going to be on housing, so I will look forward to reporting back on that.
Councilmember Rennie?
Thank you. In addition to the Kiwanis Turnaround Lunch, today, I gave a speech at the Hillbrook Graduation. I congratulated the graduates on behalf of the town of Los Gatos and the council. I think it was well-received. Two Thursdays ago, I attended the Emergency Operating Area Council, and on Wednesday the 22nd, I attended the Safe Routes to School Breakfast.
Manager Matters. Ms. Pervetti?
Thank you. Friday is the deadline for adult commission applications. Please visit the clerk's website for more information. Thank you.
All right, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for attending.